This is the Grotton Board of Education Committee of the whole meeting on Monday, March 17th, 2025. It is now 6:05 and this meeting is being held in central office and online. Today we have online, we have Matt Schulman and Dr. Ackerman and in person we have Dean, Mike, Jen, myself, Adrian, and Dr. Mancini, and Denise, and Clint, who's going to give us a presentation along with Denise and the superintendent. So thank you all for attending. The first item on the agenda is to review the minutes of March 10th. Do you have a motion to approve the minutes of March 10th?
So.
Dean, do you have a second?
A second.
Jen? Any comments? Any corrections? No? All right. All those in favor of approving the minutes of March 10th, say aye.
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 Oppose, extension, so approved. The next item is a presentation about AI by Dr. Kennedy. And do you want to say anything first?
No, but Dr. Kennedy has really been leading several of us in this work and we've, you know, played around with the idea and looked at some different sites, the free sites versus the paid sites, and have gotten some tips. But it really is kind of like Wikipedia in the beginning, you've got to really be careful because sometimes it doesn't always give you the truth. So you've got to really put in the right information to get it to, you know, come to full fruition for you. And then you have to personalize it. It has to be your voice, you know?
And I hear Dr. Kennedy is well versed on AI.
He's well versed, yeah.
So I've been very excited to hear what he has to say for a couple of months now.
So we had the PD day, March 7th, and his presentation was pretty full and a lot of people were just really impressed and liked getting the kind of the starting tips.
Great. I'm going to dive in. I have 30 minutes. I'm going to try to keep it to that. Obviously, we can do some questions, what have you. A disclaimer at the front. Forgive me, I'm talking my back to you, Dean. I am not an expert and if anybody claims to be an AI expert, I would question their credentials or their knowledge, whatever. This field is moving so quickly. I consider it part of my professional and personal practice to try to keep up with it. It's moving very quickly, unlike arguably any technology that I've seen over my almost 30-year career in tech. So just with that there, I hope you don't mind, I've taken some liberties on how I'm laying out the presentation tonight. What you're going to see roughly is kind of the bones of how I've been doing, working some of the professional development workshops with our staff over the last six months or so. It's really intended to be a jumpstart to define terms, make sure that we're all working kind of on the, using the same nomenclature and have a basic understanding, and then an opportunity to dive in and get their hands, you know, dirty, wet, whatever, playing with some of these in a safe environment with their colleagues, with me, so that they can, you know, try it, make mistakes, find issues and so forth, and really think that through, just so that we as a learning community can start building more as this continues to come at us and change and so forth. It's here. It's not going away. And AI people love to say, this is the worst it's ever going to get. I don't know if I love that or not, but that's kind of where we're at. So I just wanted to situate you for that. So just very quickly, and I'll try to do this briefly or whatever, but I need to take a dipstick test of kind of where people are at. So would anybody like to share very briefly kind of what you've used, how you've used it, I haven't used it at all, or what have you, just to situate kind of where my audience is at. And this is what I do with teachers too, to see where they're at.
I haven't used it. I won't.
Okay, fair enough. There are no wrong answers here. I'm just trying to understand kind of where my audience is at. Adrian?
I use it occasionally to rewrite. I issue a lot of reports and sometimes I haven't edit them.
Great.
I only see it in the search engines and often I find the answers aren't that great.
Yeah, they do. The main search engines are certainly trying to prioritize it and push it at us, that's for sure. Jen?
I'm like, like, but I haven't used it.
Gotcha.
I see it, but not use it.
Useative AI today.
I'm going with it just to see what it's capable of.
Great. Mr. Schulman or Dr. Ackerman, any thoughts?
Well, I wonder about if being intelligent. It is an analytical tool that is based on the quality of its data sets and because it reaches so widely, it incorporates data sets of all sorts of opinions and some really startlingly unpleasant. So we need to look at responses and ask again and again for sources, and that's just the starting point. From there, one has to be responsible for oneself and to one's community.
Well said. Thank you. Dr. Ackerman, would you like to weigh in or no?
I don't even have a smartphone, so is that how you're doing?
Thank you for participating. Thank you. All right. So the way I typically run it with teachers is we kind of lay out what we're going to, our goals, shared goals, we tweak that just to make sure everybody's comfortable. And I take kind of instructional model of launch, explore, summarize, meaning we're launching to get more information, understand, define terms and so forth. We have time to explore what we're talking about and then we kind of have a summarized stand portion where we're reporting back, we're having an ongoing discussion, what did we find, what are questions, what are ah homs and so forth. So I'm going to walk you through that. I'm not going to drag you. This is not a workshop, so you don't have to do too much work, but I just wanted to make sure you understood. So the three goals that I usually tell them that we have agreed on to date is one, to have a baseline understanding, two, differentiate between kind of the big buckets of when we talk about AI, what are we really talking about? Because it's this huge amorphous term and we put some kind of granularity to that. And then I want them to explore and think critically about this in general, you know, reflecting some of Matthew's comments, which I think are on point. But also, how does this become part of our professional practice? What is appropriate use with students or not? Where is it headed, et cetera, et cetera? So those are kind of the goals that we're trying to achieve with these workshops that we're doing and you're getting the Reader's Digest version of tonight. So first, let's define our terms. So I'm going to define these four terms quickly. And again, I'm moving quickly tonight because I know I'm not the only thing on the agenda. The term AI has been around for a very long time, so I'm not going to take a lot of time to define this, but this is the most concise definition that I could come up with, including using AI tools to define it. So machine simulating human intelligence, simulating, I think being a key word, human intelligence to learn reason and solve problems. So for our arguments tonight and ongoing, I think that's a acceptable definition of what we do when you hear this general term AI, and obviously it's everywhere. The AI tools that you are seeing in the popular press now, and that some of you have talked about using and playing with and so forth, to me are better described as generative AI. This is not a sentient being out there directing its own goals, thinking through what's best for you, the user, and then helping you out with this. It's really machine learning that's generating answers or responses or carrying out the task that you directed to do. And you can see this standard here. Really, it's a very fast and very efficient pattern recognizing machine. So in a simple sense, when you ask it, and my first test question with every new system is why is the sky blue, it's actually not going through and thinking about the science and the elements of it. It's actually looking at the data it has access to and how have people put together words and sentences to give that answer in the past. So it does not always do a good job of making sure stepping back and looking at it in a holistic view, but because of the technology and how it's grown, it is very efficient in scouring this world of data and so forth. And more times than not, it comes back with a very reasonable and often detailed answer why the sky is blue, or whatever the case may be. So it's generating an answer and because of that, you will not always get the same answer from if you pick any of the numerous tools that are out there. So it's generating an answer based on the data sets that it has, really calculating probabilities and finding patterns and getting it back to you. I hope that's not disappointing. It's not super smart from that standpoint. It's just super efficient and a great pattern recognizer. So that's generative AI or GAI. And I'm specifically calling it that because I want to compare and contrast it to what seems to be the goal of a lot of these very fast-moving and now billions of billions of dollars in funding companies that are with the stated goal of going after AGI or artificial general intelligence. And you can read the definition that I have up here, but this is often referred to as superintelligence or kind of that point where we go from it being close to, but not as smart as human intelligence, but potentially being equal to or greater than. Again, there is not a single definition that we can all agree on. Even the experts, quote unquote, experts in the field are struggling with a common definition of what artificial general intelligence is. They can't even tell us what would be the telltale signs that we get there. I hope it's not because we're all food for the machines at that point, but you know, I'm not saying that that's going to happen, but you know, sci-fi has taken this on Terminator and The Matrix and other things like this. I'm not overly concerned that they were getting to this tomorrow, but when we talk about these terms, when we talk about AI in general, we are in a generative AI age and many are trying to point to this idea of an artificial general intelligence or an AGI age. Again, I'm defining these terms because I want to situate you all in part of the conversation. So as you're reading articles about it or having conversations, this is kind of what we're doing. Okay, last but not least, as far as terms, large language models. This is the specific technology that's underlying the GAI or generative AI models that we have. It's a way of structuring very, very, very large sets of data and training that data and organizing it in a way that it can be useful to us. So you're going to see that term LLM in the popular press as well. And that is really the underlying technology. That's kind of the key technology advancement that we've made since that kind of chat GPT moment that a lot of people talk about in the end of 2022. This technology, large language models, is what's powering that. And there's a bunch of companies out there that are building and training their own LLMs out there and different tools that we're using are now powered by these large language models in the background. Is this important to know in the grand scheme of things? Not necessarily, but I think it's important to all of you. As you see LLM in the world and in these articles, you understand that it is a model and there's many, many models out there. We had a moment a couple of months ago where a Chinese company came out with a model called DeepSeek and it was told it was much more efficient for power and money and so forth. So it's just yet another LLM model that's out there. Some of these models are corporate secrets that they keep very close to the vest and do not share. Others are being open sourced and you can go and download it and run it on your local machine should you want to. And a lot of privacy advocates are recommending you do that. But this is kind of the big field. So we have general AI in the biggest terms. We have generative AI, GAI, which is what we're really talking about now, powered by LLMs. And there are those out there that seem to think the big race now is which country, which global group gets to artificial general intelligence or superintelligence first. Questions, comments, concerns, or someone with better technical chops that can do a better job, please. This is again, moving quickly, please.
So can AI actually solve problems that people can't, or can it just do a good job giving you information that already people, other people have already done?
I don't mean to be flippant, but it really depends on how you term the solve. If you, if you're saying it gives you an answer that's right and we haven't been able to do it, there are LLMs that are doing PhD level work, so to speak.
But it's all based off of other people's work. So it's not actually...
The raw data that's using is everybody else's work. And I'm going to talk about that as kind of my summary on, from a philosophical standpoint. Are we just getting to like the perfect A-plus student that can regurgitate everything the world has ever seen really efficiently and really well, which has huge value obviously? Or is it a tool that we're going to get to where it can actually think and maybe come up with unique solutions to problems that we're stuck with or struggling with to come up with to get to a better place? Or turn us all into paperclips or whatever the case may be. So yes, there are tools out there that can solve really unique problems. And every once in a while, you'll see one that solves a math problem that has stumped mathematicians for years and years. But it's not, it's not setting its own goals and then going after those goals. And it's certainly not, to this point, taking on new knowledge that has never been discovered in a way that can help us solve some of those big, small, medium problems. And again, I'm painting with a very broad brush here. This is not a scientific talk and I'm not an expert in all of this, but I'm there. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Cool. Other questions? Comments? Concerns? All right, I'm going to keep it moving. So once we define terms, we really talk about three areas of where these tools are coming into. One, we have our foundational models. Two, we have new ed tech tools that didn't exist before this kind of revolution that we're looking at. And then three, the tools that many of our staff and students have been using for years that are adding these as features. So this is not an exhaustive list, but you'll probably recognize some of this. So the foundational models, these LLMs that we're talking about, that large companies are taking and making products for you to use in either charging you money or charging you by getting your attention and then providing advertising or whatever the case may be. OpenAI has ChatGPT, which is kind of the Kleenex of this world, for those of you who understand the analogy.
Yes.
Versus the paid.
And they're, all of these have free and paid versions and so forth, yes. Google has their Gemini foundational model. There's a company called Anthropic that has a model called Claude and it's really separated itself from its ability to assist computer programmers to be very efficient, 10x or 100x in productivity levels. Meta, the parent company of Facebook and WhatsApp and Instagram and so forth, has a model called Llama and they have open source that, so you can download that. And then I have added here DeepSeek, which is probably the top Chinese company who's building LLMs out there that had kind of took the world by storm, again, because of their efficiencies and power and money to train and provide these models to people. Privacy issues, we will leave on the table for now. So those are our foundational models.
Before you scoot, talk to us a little bit about some of the things you've tried out and the ones that you've, I know you and Leah have done a lot of work and you've said the more you can put into the engine, the better results you're going to get.
Sure. A lot of the work that I've been doing with the World Language Department and others is how do you take these foundational models and then kind of personalize it to make it your own? A simple example would be the ChatGPT has a feature where instead of it just looking at its wealth of knowledge and all the world's knowledge, you can feed it documents. And one of the projects I'm working on is taking all of our policies across the board and having a ChatGPT-like interface. So it's not making anything up. It's hopefully not hallucinating, which is a term you'll hear when it makes a mistake in its pattern recognition. But it has specific Groton Public Schools documents where it's getting answers. So as a parent, as an employee, as a student or what have you, instead of having to understand, well, this is a 6,000 series and it's about this, I can use natural human language to start querying that and it'll surface documents, it'll surface passages from it and so forth. We're still testing it. I don't want to, it's not ready for primetime. I want to make sure it's good. But this is a fairly trivial use of AI because we're giving it the data set that we want it to use as its specific database to do that. Another project we're working on is using curriculum documents. So you have existing curriculum documents which have instructional activities and assessments in it. And then you have World Language Case. There's the national organization called ACTFOL and they have their foundational documents about world language curriculum instruction and so forth. So marrying those two in a unique interface for Groton Public Schools could be a really interesting way to design unique lessons, which is staying true to our curriculum and identifying the standards that you all have approved and so forth, while at the same time referencing best practices in the national organization's foundational documents. Again, as two examples of things that we should be looking at. And that's not world language specific. That could be science. That could be math. That could be social studies and more.
And you found certain ones that paid version give you a little bit better.
Yes. One of the things that we're talking about, just to get off script here a little bit, is these companies, these foundational model companies have raised billions of dollars and a lot of that is going into salaries. A lot more of it is going into powerful computers and power to run those computers to train these models. That is where a lot of money is going. So you know. Okay. So Zach?
Quickly.
Yeah, yeah, please.
Are any of these models better for education than others or are they all the same?
I have privacy concerns about all of them and that's something that we talk about. And we're going to get into that next. One of the reasons why I do advocate at times for specific ed tech tools that are sitting on top of these because, as you're all aware, we have certain rules and regs in the state of Connecticut on what tools we can provide in the classroom or not with students, which meet a certain bar of student data privacy. So we'll talk about that in a second. All of these work well for specific things if you want, this is not school related, if you want general use as a learner in general. ChatGPT is the granddaddy. It is hard to go wrong with. If you, I personally use a tool called Perplexity AI that has replaced 90% of the time I go to Google. I now go to Perplexity. Just as a, this is an aside, free chat. Okay, so second bucket are these new ed tech tools. These tools did not exist before this 2022 inflection point. MagicSchool.ai is one that's getting a lot of buzz. It's $20,000 a year for a school district to use and it has approximately 80 kind of pre-made specific foundational model tools to power education and focus squarely at teachers, rubric builders, prompt generators, image creation, et cetera, et cetera. Some really interesting possibilities, but it's kind of a huge toolbox full of individual tools that teachers can pick up and hopefully use in alignment with curriculum and scope and sequence and things like that. So that's getting a lot. We happen to be testing Brisk Teaching, which is far less expensive than Magic School. And it, it's about $3,000. I did, got us a discount and that covers all teachers, middle and high school through this year. And it does four things really well. It took the place of what we were doing with NewZella, which was a $40,000 cost. It does a great job of resetting Lexia levels for certain text. So not only can you change the Lexia level, but you can change the language. It will add reading comprehension assessments, again, formative assessments, low stakes. These aren't graded, but just to test reading comprehension and so forth. And what it does is it sits as a little icon on each webpage you visit so that if I'm on an article at the Associated Press and it's discussing the latest tariff situation, it's a business class, I don't know, I'm making this up. You know, you can have it create a Google Doc automatically from that. You can set the reading grade level. You can set a reading comprehension quiz. If you have a student that's struggling because they just arrived from Vietnam, you can put it in Vietnamese next to the English and other things like that. So it's a smaller, more targeted tool to help teachers with some everyday practice and they're going to be building out their toolbox as well. School AI does a lot of what Magic School does, as does EduAid. And Khanmigo is from Khan Academy, Saul Khan, which many of you may have heard of. I'm not endorsing these or I'm just giving you the waterfront right now. And they're building what would be a, not a personal tutor, but an individual tutor so that if a student is having a problem with math, we know that there's plenty of apps out there where you just take your phone and you take a picture of the math problem and it gives you the solution. What Khanmigo is trying to do is you take a picture of the math problem and it prompts you on the first question on how to get started and you answer it and it says great or no, I would correct it. And then it walks you through the next step and so forth. So it's trying to scaffold the learning as opposed to just giving a student the answer, which we all know provides zero learning and goes. So that is a new tool in that.
Third, excuse me. Can I just ask this question?
Yeah, please.
Are all these others around 20K but first teaching is the $3,000?
They all have different models.
Yeah.
But Magic School is the most expensive because it has the most buzz right now. And if you look at Magic School's career page and job opportunities, 90% of them are sales and marketing.
Okay, got it.
Take whatever you want from that, but that's where it's at. Third bucket, we use a lot of these tools, not necessarily Duolingo, but they've added a lot to it. And they're adding specific AI features in it. So to situate teachers and students when we have these conversations, we kind of start with the bucket. Are you using kind of a very large general use tool like a foundational model, which is, can be very good depending on your task and going? Are you a teacher and you are accessing a specific ed tech AI tool? Or are you jumping in on a feature on some of these tools that we've been using and are approved by the state from a student data privacy standpoint and so forth and trying to enhance what you're trying to accomplish with that from a learning perspective? So those are our three buckets. Very quickly, one of the things I do, much like I went around the table here, I often have a large group of teachers. So I'll give the question, stand up and give me a spectrum of where you're at from X to Y or whatever. And I ask them, I've never used the tools. All the way through, I'm a super AI user and everybody seems to be just a little bit to the left of the middle point because there's some, you know, groups like to hang out together and so forth. But then I'll have some at the polar opposites. And then I typically ask them, you know, I'm highly skeptical about AI will impact teaching over the next three to five years, or I'm very excited about the possibilities it has to offer. Again, as I'm, we're working through this because a lot of this isn't just not me knowing everything and imparting some kind of wisdom on them. It's me helping them discuss the tools, the options, how does this impact curriculum, instruction, assessment. And again, I can't say it enough, this is changing very quickly. So we need to continue to talk about this, discuss practice. I want teachers to be informed and I want them actively engaging with this so we can have an informed conversation about what's appropriate, what's not, how we're moving forward. Okay, so then what we typically do is we break up, teachers will self-select which group they want, a foundational model group, they really want to dive into one of the new tools, or they really love Canva and they know a new feature is going to help them in their classroom. And then we kind of come back and we have a debrief and talk about that. And people usually take an action item for next step, what they're going to try out, how they're going to do it in their classroom. And we're going to meet on a regular basis on kind of what the next steps are and how we can do this.
So you personalize learning and you make it student-centered.
I'm trying. The teachers are, in this particular case, I mean, I'm a bit of a student as well because I'm learning from them as well in kind of that connective tissue or I'm hoping to be. So then we do a debrief and we kind of go through what each group had and I share these notes with them. Okay, so after that, I usually turn to a next steps because one of the most important things for me is this, is to situate it in the world and what we're doing. There is a cost to all this. Even the free tools has an indirect cost to us as a society. These tools, there's two pieces to this. These models, these LLMs are trained, meaning their model is created and that training again takes a ton of compute and a ton of power for that compute. And then it's inferred. So when you go and ask ChatGPT, why is the sky blue, it's taking your question and it's using the model, it's running the computer to infer from that model how to get you the best answer that you want. And that takes computing power and energy as well. So I'm going to get this backwards, so please don't quote me on this, but I think both Microsoft and Google, who are very much in this world, had committed to lowering their emissions or make it zero by 2030, you know, what's the term I'm looking for, to offset their emissions or environmentally friendly. Their energy consumption in 2024 was raised by 48% and 43% respectively. So they're going the opposite way of what they said. I'm not making any judgments. I'm just saying what they publicly stated and where they're headed as far as energy consumption and those sources, to the point where they're actually in negotiations of reopening some of the nuclear facilities in our country, power plants that have been decommissioned. Again, this is just what's in the popular press and so forth. This is a huge energy sink and there are impacts on energy usage, the environment and so forth. So I bring that up. I don't make any value judgments, but I think it's important for us to all think about how we're going to power these and what is the impact. By the way, these tools are great at not just providing a text-based answer, but they're also good at providing an image. You can go in and say, I'd really like to see Bev driving a Ferrari at the Formula One race this weekend, or whatever the case may be.
And there you go.
It's getting better and better all the time. But that takes even more power in compute cycles to create Bev in a Ferrari at the Australian Grand Prix than it would for us to describe that in words. And even more so, some of these LLMs are now able to take a text-based description or a picture and actually create a video out of it. So you've probably seen this, but those are interesting. But a lot of times, when I'm speaking with other educators, I'm saying, let's crawl, walk, run, you know. One, there's the energy usage, but putting that aside, let's make sure it's appropriate for what we're learning. And if generating an image is appropriate for learning in this particular activity, well then fine. If it's not, let's stick with the text-based stuff and make sure that it fits, it's appropriate and so forth. Your homework, your first homework officially, is to go to a site called sesame.ai. They have a demo out now, which to me, just recently, is the most cutting-edge LLM model that can actually have a lang, an oral conversation with you. You shouldn't. All right, well, it's just you. We don't trust you yet. You haven't been, no, I'm kidding.
So it gives you oral answers.
You can either pick Maya or Miles.
Maya or Miles.
There are two options. It gives you a wonderful preview of where the technology is at as far as having a vocal conversation. So not a text-based conversation, but actually speaking. And this has got the ums and the pauses. A lot of these tools up to this have really struggled, like you, we've all been on a telephone with a delay and you're kind of like, no, you go, no, you go, no, okay, I'll go. And then you start. It, it's really quite amazing. And...
Clint, what's the point of it? Like, what would you be discussing? Like?
Well, this is just like talking to somebody on the street. They have general knowledge of the world and so forth.
You could ask a question, you mean?
Yeah, ask them anything you want. So that's the second part of your assignment. Please talk to them and then ask them anything you want. I was doing this with a group of social studies teachers the other day and we asked them to pretend you're Stalin and still alive, speak as if you are Stalin and explain to us what you would have done differently knowing what you know now if you hadn't passed away, or something like that. It was fascinating. I'm not promoting Stalin. If you hadn't passed away or something like that. It was fascinating. I'm not promoting Stalin. I'm not supporting Stalin. That's a historical figure. To have that, not only speak of that in reference to a time and place, but then add new information because. Fake Stalin had access to obviously everything past his death. Uh, was fascinating. So that started a conversation with all the history teachers. And they were picking other people.
They take that when they were getting the answer.
They were, they were, you know, and it wasn't perfect or whatever, but I I think the reason I bring it up. Is I think it's important for people who are engaged in this and I think all of you should be engaged in and somewhat having an experience like that. And again. This could be marketing language, but this is the worst it will ever be. And there are pros, there's cons, there's things we haven't even thought about yet. I don't mean to promote this as the end all be all or something all good. I personally think there are some real negatives with this as well, but it's out there and we should be aware of it. And I think there is benefit as well. So that's your first piece of homework.
Hey Clint, can I ask a question?
Yeah, please.
If you were to ask sesame dot com a question, can you have them follow it up in writing? Or is it just verbal?
Sesame, no. But if you do want something like that, chat GPT specifically has the ability, if you're using their app, not their web based interface, but if you have the app on your phone. Or if you download the app on your computer, there is the ability to have a conversation with it orally as opposed to typing it. I've been experimenting this with kind of a world language tutor.
Okay.
And I'll say, please only speak to me in Spanish, but please correct me when I'm wrong. And please assume that I have a second grade reading level in Spanish. And not only will it do that and slow down for me so I can practice my very broken Spanish. But then it has a full text transcript of everything it says and I.
Oh, cool.
So you could envision a homework assignment, which is here's a prompt. I want you to have a conversation in Spanish about this particular topic. And your homework assignment is to turn in the transcript of that the next day.
And we're doing so much of that at the middle school and the high school where kids are actually speaking into the computer. That's kind of how we're assessing.
That's not easy to cheat.
No.
Right.
That's great.
So let's say Meta, right, like um, do you think in their large database, they're taking like your Facebook, um Instagram? And then like, hey, this is the John White profile.
I think that's possible.
I wasn't sure.
Maybe probable. I don't know for sure. I don't have any inside information.
Yeah, no, no, I wasn't sure.
But there is something I wasn't going to cover tonight, but there is a lot of discussion about intellectual property. And how these L L Ms are trained because they're trained by as they're better when they can train on as much data and high quality structured data. Matthew's point again, I think was well taken. It's a garbage in garbage out problem. So they're looking for well structured. So it's easier to process. High quality data as much as they can get. And some companies are starting to say, well, you can't just look at my website for free and use that to train your model. New York Times being one of them saying, we'll let you do that, but you're going to have to pay to use our data to train it. So there's things like that. Obviously, when we get into vocalization and other things, there's intellectual property rights. Hollywood is not super happy, or at least some of Hollywood is not super happy because it can write a song for you. It can perform a song for you.
Write a script. Write a script.
Write a script and so forth. So again, all of these are considerations. I'm not making value judgments, but they are out there and being litigated in the public. In private, in our systems and so forth. Now, I share this because oftentimes. And I didn't get it tonight, but I'll often get, well, I know my kids are using it, my students, and I know they're cheating with it. I'm quoting. So I say, well, let's give them an opportunity to not cheat. Let's give them permission because a lot of students. Not to be personal, but including my daughter, who's a senior and was writing college essays and so forth. Um, they don't know what's permissible and not. And they're nervous because they don't want to get dinged and say, well, I've lost my chance to go to UConn because I turned in a uh, an essay that I reviewed through chat GPT. For whatever. So I think we need to scaffold for students on how to use this, but we also need to give them explicit permission to when and when not use it or to when to try it. So this is just one example of kind of a level one through four. So you're starting from no AI assistance at all, all the way through. Full partner in the creation process. And I've seen examples of each of these levels done quite well. To the point where at almost as a summary assessment at the end of a unit, they'll say, great, let's now let's see if you're smarter than AI. And the AI will answer the big summative question at the end and then students will go in and pick apart the arguments of the AI. Which to me is a really interesting use of this where they're engaged, but they're also motivated to be outsmart the AI or whatever, just as an example. So I think. Having a thoughtful conversation with teachers, but also with students around when it's appropriate and giving them permission on when or when to not use this is important. Because if not, we have this gray area and then are you cheating or not? We had the case in Massachusetts or late twenty four. Where a student used AI to write an essay and he later admitted he just. Put the question into chat GPT and then copied and pasted into a word document and turned that in. He received a failing grade on that and was labeled a cheater and had certain repercussions. He was trying to get into a good college. His parents sued and ultimately because they said there wasn't an AI, there wasn't a policy that specifically addressed that particular issue. It was litigated and the the judge decided with the school in that particular case. Again, I don't know the details of the case, but those are out there. So we're probably going to see more of those. Um, so that's.
Definitely something I know Matthew as the chair of policy has talked about.
Yep.
And I know that you've started looking into it. So it's something we're going to have to take a look at because what is plagiarism anymore when you have these tools like where?
What is citing the resources and so forth.
And I'm sure our teachers are asking those questions.
And we have a draft that we've been working on internally that's that that was based on some capability.
So coming soon, Matthew will be able to take a deep dive on that.
All right. Um, I wanted to, I have three quick comments there and open up to questions, but I know I'm over time. So. One of the things that we often hear in the popular press is that AI won't replace people as far as jobs go. I'm talking about in general. But people with AI skills will replace those people who do not have AI skills. There is not, I've not seen empirical evidence or long-term studies that have shown this. I don't think that's possible in because this is so new. But that is, that is a, that is a theme out there uh that many people are talking about and the appropriateness of it being part of school curriculum and how we should be at least. Testing and embracing these tools and so forth. So I I put it out there. Um, I tend to agree with it, but again, it's very early days. One of the terms you're going to hear very, you you've probably already heard it is this idea of agents. And this is kind of where a lot of money is flowing into. So agents uh add planning memory and tool use to L L Ms. The typical cases of these are, I'm planning a family vacation. There's five of us. We want to go to Aruba for a summer vacation after school's out. Find us tickets, a cheap hotel, a a a safe hotel that's inexpensive and plan the activities. And please also order tickets for any shows that we're going to or whatever. Agents are now taking. What L L Ms have been to date where it could write a seven day itinerary for you, which was really cool and accurate. And references the places you should see again, based on the data that's been fed. So it's looking at. You know, travel websites and popular destinations and things like that, but it actually then has the ability to go in act for you. To book a ticket to, you know, uh, make a reservation at a hotel or to secure a half day scuba tour or whatever the case may be. So. This really points to a lot of these companies put so much money in, they now have to productize their efforts. And have some way to charge us as the user to justify these. Now, some people would argue that's a real benefit to me and time is money and I would save that and so forth. But agents are are becoming a larger talking point in how we take, you know, a chat, a text based interface that's good at answering questions. To actually doing work for me in the world. So again, this is still very new and a lot of the use cases are productivity. At the, you know, at the for-profit business level, things like that. Um, but some people are excited because you could have. Hundreds of agents out there working for you. Um, the other piece of homework I'd love for you to do is a couple of these foundational models have what's called a deep research option. And if you put in a research question, not a typical, um, you know, web search, who won the Celtics game last night, but an actual research question. These agents are now working to not only formulate resources and create a hypothesis and test the hypothesis and then create a, you know, it's kind of a standard five section research paper. They're not always good, but some are really good. And what they do is they're trained to actually go out and think. So it's not going to give you an answer in five seconds, ten seconds. It may email you thirty minutes later and say, I've prepared your report for you. Um, so these are coming. Again, no value judgments, but these are out there. One thing I noticed because I'm a member of the uh IT Director's Users Group for the state of Connecticut is Norwalk Public Schools has a recent posting. The job title is Director of Digital Transformation in their central office. And the digital transformation director will focus on leading the district's AI and digital education initiatives under the guidance of the assistant superintendent. And it is all AI. When you look down all the key responsibilities and so forth. So I'm not, I'm not sharing this for any other reason, but we have. Norwalk Public Schools in my almost thirty years of education, most of it in Connecticut, has always been kind of on the cutting edge of some of the tech usage and so forth. But I just want to give you a real world example that that is, that is out there. Um, to sum all this up. If I can possibly do that, I hope you don't mind. I'll take the liberty. I'm going to kind of riff on that idea of, do you want an A plus student? That knows everything that's known? Or do you want something that actually is able to ask questions of things we missed? So I'm just going to read this. It'll take me twenty seconds. So this is about AI tools from one of the big Tom Wolfe, who's a thinker in this field, about AI tools. We're currently building very obedient students tools. Not revolutionaries. This is a perfect for today's main goal in the field of creating great assistants and overly compliant helpers. But until we find a way to incentivize them to question their knowledge and propose ideas that potentially go against past training data, they won't give us scientific revolutions yet. If we want scientific breakthroughs, we should probably explore how we're currently measuring the performance of AI models. And move to a measure of knowledge and reasoning able to test if scientific AI models can, for instance, challenge their own training data knowledge. Take bold counterfactual approaches, make general proposals based on tiny hints or ask non-obvious questions that lead to new research paths. We don't need A plus students who can answer every question with general knowledge. We need a B student who sees the questions what everyone else has misses. And questions what everyone else missed. I think that's an important thing to kind of end with or think about.
Does he have articles or?
Yes, I can share the full article with you, but I thought that was, that was important. Um, because that's kind of where we're at. And again, he's talking about the tools and these L L Ms and the ability we have with them right now. But where are they going? And that's the question. I'm over. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Thank you for the time.
Very interesting.
Anything else that I could, our general kind of questions, comments? But this is a long way from when I used to play with the football. Fair enough.
All right. Well, thank you, Clint.
All right.
Question, Mike?
Yeah, I was just wondering, um, you earlier on, you listed a number of software, some of the ones we have.
Yep.
What ones right now have a AI element to it?
So there there's a handful that we have traditionally used. Uh, where's my list? Here, Canva, every, every, because we're an educational institution, every adult has access to Canva, which is very popular. Photoshop light or whatever. Um, uh, we have EdPuzzle, um, we have the Adobe Creative Suite and so forth. So so there's some of the bigger ones. That are out there that have some of these AI features built in.
And and so they're, they just basically came online with new versions like I would guess.
So yeah, or yeah, a point upgrade. So they went from four point five to four point six and now they have AI AI features in it. Typically what these companies are doing is they're buying a subscription to a foundational model, chat GPT or what have you. And that's powering those, those AI features in some of those software tools.
So again, just one quick question. I I recognize all of them. Uh, Canva, Quizlet, EdPuzzle, I know.
Yep.
Is used. Is Duolingo generally used by students? I don't know.
It is not.
Okay.
We don't have a subscription to it or anything.
Oh, okay. And then Adobe CS, what's the?
The Creative Suite.
Oh, 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 and.
Photoshop, Adobe Premiere, things like that. We we use that in both the middle and high school for some of the multimedia courses and so forth.
So that's like more specific seats. Not every student has has that.
Yeah, it would be too expensive. They do have access to it when they're enrolled in those classes and they take it. Because it is kind of an industry standard, whether you like it or not, it is an industry standard. So.
Yeah, it makes sense. Then my other question is like when we're going through the budget, uh, software costs were up quite a bit. And like, you know, percentage wise, that wasn't us adding new software packages, just the cost went up. Is this uh part of the reason they're rationalizing?
I did not put any AI tool increase in the budget in my budget request for next year.
No, I mean, like, like, for instance, Canva you've had for years, but now they've got this new functionality. So and it's not like you can go without it.
They do have to pay their electricity bill.
Yeah, so.
But they all generally, even Lexia, which we've used for years and years, that used to, I think I've told you that used to be like a ten thousand, fourteen thousand, now it's forty. So they've just skyrocketed.
Yeah. And none of the lists I showed tonight are comprehensive lists. I'm trying to give a sample and and spark some thoughts about this and then encourage people to dive deeper on their own. Maybe the tools that they use that I'm not familiar with. Again, in preparation, if it's student use, that's a different ballgame. Those have to be approved from a student data privacy standpoint.
Mike, what are you seeing at the university? Like with research and everything? I mean, that's a little slippery slope, huh?
Well, actually it's interesting. Some of the, I really like the five stage, um, uh, you know, five levels of inter- involvement of AI. Uh, so in public, publishing, some of the journals allow you to to say that. Uh, my grad students will start right off with it and 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 go from there, like in just in a research task, not writing. But this is actually, I think, really like pushing something, a student version out of something like this to high school students.
Yeah.
Will be great so that they know like, like, okay, I can use this. I can do it this way, this way, this way. And this is how I could um like cite it. Because there are students that are going to use it and students that are going to be fearful.
It might be something that policy too, to give direction or handbooks or something.
I think we need to help give permission to students. So they are, to be fair to them, to understand, so they know what's what's appropriate and what's not.
Yeah, I'm surprised the universities aren't giving direction to them too.
They are, at least the, you know, anecdotally, the ones that I've looked at and so forth. Yale has a wonderful site on kind of resources, but also guidance and and so forth. But again. This is happening quickly.
Yes.
And we know that sometimes, sometimes educational institutions do not move as quickly.
Actually, I'd I'd counter at every level, it's the student stuff and that that push us. And so they're, they're going to be in tech adoption. So they're, they're out in front of this. We just need guidance, like gone are the days when I just said, well, you have too much screen time. Our kids like, well, define screen time. That's a good point, right?
Yeah.
Uh, and so it's going to be the same thing with AI.
Yeah. Last point on that too. The variance in people's abilities and experience and diving into this is it's very wide. So if nothing else, part of my efforts is I'm trying to baseline and bring us together. So we can at least have an informed conversation about this. As we start making decisions. Because again, I think it's fairly come. Teachers, administrators, students, paraprofessionals, like as I talk to different people, all of those groups have a pretty wide variance of who's grabbed it and started playing with. I don't know where to start to I've tested it a few times and not really sure where I go next. So it's. The variance is crazy around that, which I think speaks to why this is so important for us to continue to baseline and build together up.
Dean has a question.
Yeah, thanks. Um, two related things, I hope. One is, um, at least through my own kids, there is a sense out there among young adults that they. Had better look to things to do in the future, ways of making a living that will not be uh wiped out by AI. When I was, you know, and you know, becoming an engineer, it was sort of accepted that a lot of blue collar jobs, just to over generalize, are going to go because. You know, Japanese robotics especially are just going to wipe out a lot of these factory floor uh jobs. Now people are saying, well, wait a minute, what's going to be the? Should I bother becoming a CPA? Because eventually one of these things is going to take over, you know, that kind of a job, et cetera. So where can I go where I won't be wiped out? Two. From both parents and kids, there's always been a basic expectation. If the kids come to school, mostly along the parents. I send my kids to school, they're going to learn basic things like how to read, how to write, how to count, you know. So is there going to be an expectation? Is there an expectation now that we're talking about policy about how to use AI? But is there a um, an expectation that, well, it's here, it's going to be here, it's not going away, it's going to become more powerful. Damn it, I want my kids properly educated. What program do you have? I'm not saying that people have anything specific in mind, but they think of it or going, they're going to be thinking of it as a basic skill. And your school's either teaching my children the way they taught them how to read and write, hopefully and count. They better be teaching them about AI as well. And your policy is about using AI and, you know, what's plagiarism or not are all well and good. But my kids need to be ahead of this beast, you know. Uh, I don't know whether we're sensing anything like that or we're hearing anything like that from kids or from uh, from from families.
My quick reaction, one, the to your first point, I always hear the term paralegal. Please don't go and get trained as a paralegal because that's going to go away. I'm not saying I have evidence of that or whatever, but to your point, it's be able to do that work for you. The second, there are some universities out there that have courses called prompt engineering. Which basically teaches you how to engineer your questions and data to to be as efficient and optimizing as possible of your. Working with an AI assistant.
That's an extension. I mean, I remember what, just just going. That's an extension, I mean, I remember, just, just going to law school, I'm sure it's true in other areas as well, there's a whole class on legal research and, and writing, and a lot of that was how to intelligently construct queries at a very, very basic level now, but how to construct queries so you can search LexisNexis or Westlaw so you can actually get competent results back. There was a whole little science about that, so I see that as an extension of that.
Yeah, fair enough.
So what's next for the board?
So I think, I think the policy committee, we should coordinate that and take a look at the draft that, that we've put together. Again, we used K policy as the foundational piece, I took a shot at it, Anne Marie took a shot at it, I've been working with my instructional technology coaches in all the schools to comment and so forth. The biggest takeaway I have from it is, I, I think we should move on that sooner rather than later, but I also think we should be prepared to look at it regularly. It's not one of those policies that we can sit and then readdress fourteen years from now. And I think there's, that's completely appropriate for some policies. Don't think this is the particular case, so that would be one. Number two, I think we, what I'm hoping, and I've been collaborating with superintendent and assistant superintendent, is really build out a, a, a group, we're going to continue the professional develop offerings, but I'd really like to have kind of a, a group of,
committee.
Of committee of innovators that are not just talking about this, but actually trying it out, and it's a good cross-section of all the adults that we have across Groton Public Schools, so that we're having wide breadth of people tackling these problems and feeding back to the larger group what they're seeing, but also being that communications link, because you don't have to be on the committee to be able to, you know, make an impact and provide information and data and so forth. So that's where I see this going. I'm not proposing a brand-new job for the budget and so forth, I'm not doing that. But as I read this, I see squarely my role being part of this, a, a big part of it, as a collaborative effort.
Do you see anything in the state taking hold in your field, in your organization, in the area of innovators across?
Ed Advance in the northwestern corner is the one resk that has really taken the lead from.
Is that like, who's?
Up Torrington and so forth.
Which field?
So yeah, Matthew Mervis and a few others, they have a regular weekly podcast, they're doing micro credentialing courses, I think they're on round three of that. So they have kind of taken the lead in the state of really trying to provide some of these educational opportunities and to keep in the know. But it's still surprisingly small, the number of people that are taking advantage of that. But again, this is happening quickly, so I'm not picking on anybody, but.
Let's just say twenty-first century skills, that's kind of outdated.
Soft skills, twenty-first century skills.
Ready, but who knows what the future's going to look like, right? So it's very hard. Your question, Dean, like, how do we really ready our kids? Like, to give them, they need to learn to read and write and think, but it's really the critical thinking and the innovation that, you know, is going to be valued.
My prediction is, it's going to continue to be messy, and it will be messy on what impact this has for the knowledge worker space, for education in general, et cetera. We, again, personal opinion, we are going to have to think about and make changes in how we assess learning. We are going to have to think about and change the way we have certain instructional activities and so forth in our classrooms. That's just the reality of where we're at, and I think it's a real opportunity in some cases, but if we don't do it right, then it just makes it easier for me to be compliant to an assignment per se and do even less learning. Not saying that's the case in Groton, but I'm saying that is a distinct possibility. Again, I'm trying to balance, there's pros and cons to all of this, and how do we navigate that to make learning more accessible and equitable to our students in bringing in some of these tools without it just being a great way to say, I'll take your prompt, and ten seconds later I'll have a great five paragraph essay and here you go, teach, life is good.
Right.
Our students would never do that, of course, but I'm sure that there are some out there that may, may choose to take that route, and I hope that doesn't happen.
Matthew has a question.
Thank you. I think if we're expecting to come up with a policy, this is the wild west, and we will, I think, we will be starting probably within a year to look at elements of what will be the policy and assemble this over an elongated period of time. There is just no way we can predict what's coming even eighteen months from now. So we will continue to work, but there's no magic bullet here, you're not that smart. Thank you.
Anything else? Well, thank you, Clint.
Thank you, apologies for being over time, but thank you for the opportunity.
Your presentation can go up there too, does Mark have it?
I'm sure, it was an attachment, yeah. Mark, are you all set with the next presentation?
Probably be easy if you have.
No, I wasn't expecting it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, if you want to, if you want to log into Zoom, then you can share, that way you can.
My battery's dying, can I borrow your charger?
You work on that, I'll work on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Clint.
Thank you.
A lot to think about.
You tell I enjoyed this.
Yeah, that was a great presentation, Clint, thank you.
So Clint, do you come back with a part two or something, or this is it?
Well, we can start playing around with the policy.
I would be happy to do that, first, two, three, four, whatever you would like, but please let me know.
Okay.
Sorry, I have an extension for it.
Thank you.
You want her to move over to where you were sitting?
Seventeen. I can move over there. Are you leaving, are you staying?
I need you shortly, because I have a meeting, but.
Okay.
Recording in progress.
Did we have some miscommunication, so Karen's not going to be able to make it?
Okay.
Lauren, I see he's online.
Okay.
Well, I can get people started while he's hooking you up.
Okay.
We had come to you probably this fall to talk about an idea of early childhood programming, maybe being able to shift over to Mary Morrison at some point. And it was a great idea, we really reached out to the State Department, we reached out to the people who are running the early childhood area, and there are some opportunities, but it just, it's going to take time. And the whole concept was to be able to move over the three preschool or pre-K programs, which are, there were actually two pre-K programs and one transition K program. Now we're calling it pre-K for kindergarten, transitioning to kindergarten, so we're going to kind of meld them together. And then maybe perhaps through a grant, being able to get a couple more of those programs, housed at Mary Morrison, with a couple of our preschool programs as well, and potentially grow those programs so that we would have an early childhood center. We already have the ECAT, which we've talked to you about, speech language services, and it's the early childhood assessment team over there at Mary Morrison. But there's going to be a lot of planning and work to do to bring that proposal, especially if we want it to be cost neutral for our district and sustainable. So I said to Beverly, I just don't think this is going to happen for next year, we have too many other things right now. But it is, it is an idea, it is a vision for the future, but it's going to take a lot more work and planning. So I just wanted to do that as a precursor. I know my limitations.
All right, so we created a presentation this evening for the board, Dean, I'm sorry, I'll come back to you.
That's fine.
To update you on our plans for next year for early childhood. And we're going to start with just kind of bringing you back to, as Susan just shared, where we were with our thoughts earlier in this school year. So earlier in this school year, you can see we had an original proposal, and when I say we, I mean Susan, Anne Marie, myself, Karen Hyatt, our early childhood supervisor, and Lauren Cassini, our student data manager, have been working closely with the principals and the rest of the staff on this, this vision. So we had originally planned to have additional classrooms, really the, the, the vision was on the last bubble, to have five classrooms of full-day transition kindergarten, preschool slash transition to kindergarten. And as Susan said, you can see for all of the programs, our, our goal was to have them at Mary Morrison, so to move ECAT, well, ECAT is at Mary Morrison, so obviously to have them remain.
You want to explain what ECAT is for the audience?
Certainly, that's our early childhood assessment team, and they work with students who are ages three to five. In terms of the federal law child find requires us to locate, evaluate, and identify any child in our boundary area that may have a disability, and that's provided free of charge to parents.
And typically, they're in birth to three at first, many of them are, and then we find out through that.
Every, every school district is required to conduct child find. So the referrals can be from birth to three, when a child is two point eight, two years, eight months. The referrals can be from childhood centers, daycare centers, and parents. Obviously, when the referrals come in from the daycare center, childcare center, we go over, we provide some consultation, we try to give some strategies that the, the center could use to address the concerns, and if the strategies and the consultation, you know, don't seem to address the problem, then we reach out to the parent and we initiate, you know, let, let them know about our services and initiate a referral. So that program is currently at Mary Morrison. Our, our thought was that we could also move our seven, our six integrated preschool programs to Mary Morrison, as well as our early otters program, which is our program for students with more significant disabilities. That's a program that does not have typical peers in the program. The students in the early otters program go out to the preschool classrooms for time with non-disabled peers, but they get more intensive instruction in that classroom.
And we've really changed the name to preschool peers. They, they used to call them model or typical, and we're saying they're preschool peers.
So the goal was for these classrooms, there are seven classrooms, to move to Mary Morrison in addition to the pre-K transition to K classrooms, and we were, we had talked to the board about exploring some grant opportunities to add two more sections or sessions, so that we would have five altogether, which we have now. But I think, as you're aware, some of our teachers in our current TK classrooms will be going back to teach kindergarten next year, so we were looking at potentially some grant opportunities to provide two additional teachers. But we just, as Susan had said earlier, we're coming up against a wall in terms of time, and we realized that that's probably not feasible for September. So this is our updated proposal for next year, continue to, to house ECAT and speech services we have at Mary Morrison. We have about ten, sometimes twelve slots for preschool students who only need speech and language services. They see our speech pathologist at ECAT, so we'll keep them at Mary Morrison. Our plan is to continue to house our six integrated preschool classrooms. We have three at Thames River, three at Mystic River, and then keep our early otters classroom at Mystic River.
And there are ninety-two, I know there was a question about slots, and there are ninety-two peer slots, preschool peers, along with the special ed peers who are identified to be in these programs.
And, and then you can see, the last bubble, we revised our pre-K transition to K classrooms. Right now, we have two pre-K classrooms, they service students who are only four years old and who lack kindergarten readiness skills. So next year, what we'd like to do, they, they, by the way, have two half-day sessions, an AM and a PM. So what we'd like to do for next year is merge them into full-day programs with our one TK class that was our original TK classroom. So that would give us three classrooms, full day, eighteen students per class, or fifty-four students total in a pre-K transition K class for next year. We would have two classes at Thames and one class at Mystic River. This would not require any movement for the teachers in the classrooms, this is where they currently are housed. Just as an aside, in terms of those two half-day preschool programs, we've had some difficulty filling all of those slots, so we think if we were to offer a full-day program, we think we'd have more parents take us up on the offer because it is a full day. A lot of parents really struggle with that half-day pickup and drop-off, so I think, we all think that the full-day option would be more, you know, readily acceptable by many parents.
And the kids are getting twice as much instructional time, too.
Yeah, we have a slide coming up with the benefits too of a full-day program.
Are the kids going to be the same age for the pre-K and the transition?
For the pre-K transition to K, they'll still be four years old, they, they could be five if they miss the cutoff.
Right.
And right now, that's the age group we have. We have four-year-olds, we have some five-year-olds who've missed the cutoff for September first to be five.
Looking at the older group, which is the ones who have missed it, you know, September second to December thirty-first or January first, but then, you know, there may be room for others, but we're thinking the younger group, which, you know, the half-day program might be more appropriate, and there are those ninety-some slots available for them.
Now Denise, in the middle circle, we have ninety-two peer slots?
Yes, we have twelve sessions, twelve half-day sessions, we have six classrooms, they each have an AM and a PM, so we have twelve half-day sessions, and we take between six to eight peers per class. There is one class where our early otters integrate for, for peer, non-disabled peer hours and interactions, that class has less peers.
Okay, thanks.
All right. So we wanted to spend a little bit of time talking about the students who would be eligible for these three pre-K transition to K classrooms. So the current pre-K students turn five between September second, twenty twenty-five, and September first, twenty twenty-six. Obviously, this will be for next year. The integrated preschool students would be the same. They would turn five between September second, twenty twenty-five, and September first, twenty twenty-six. We would, we would take those students, as well as younger students, if they met the criteria. And then we also have new parent referrals. So these are the three groups that are eligible for these classrooms. We do run screenings twice a year, sometimes more, and these, the students who come to the screening who aren't currently in one of our classrooms would be eligible as well. And then at the bottom, we just wanted to note that we still have a process whereby if a student missed the cutoff for kindergarten, their parent could still apply for the early, the EE is the early admittance, early entrance to kindergarten, because we do use a kindergarten screening tool to screen for students who missed the cutoff, but whose parent would like us to consider them for early entrance to K even though they missed that cutoff.
And we had a handful who took advantage of that, and they were mostly September, October kids, and they're very successful. So, you know, we know that that can work too, for families.
And the state has not issued any guidance this year in terms of districts offering a waiver, but we've already had parents inquire as to whether or not we'll have a waiver for next year, so we're going to continue to offer it.
So there will be screenings, the schools will each do kindergarten screenings too, and I think in the preschool, we already have some of them screened already, so we already know who's going to be coming to some of those transition, pre-K transition programs that are already with us.
Yes.
So what are we offering this year that's, that we're changing?
We're changing the two half-day preschool classrooms, the four half-day sessions, to full-day classrooms for next year.
All right, but no other like program moves, so are we, so the TK is, is disappearing, correct?
No, we're going to have three, we're proposing three TKs in lieu of five.
We're calling it pre-K because that's how the state would recognizing it, and, but it is a transition to kindergarten, so it's going to have the early childhood standards, it already has it well-developed in a report card and everything. And then it also has some Connecticut Core standards, so we do a lot more with phonemic awareness with them and a lot of readiness, even with phonics and that kind of thing, and a lot of literacy.
So we're really changing the name of transition to K, and we're calling it pre-K transition to K, because if the students miss the cutoff for kindergarten, they can't be classified as kindergarten. So that name, transition K, is a bit of a misnomer, they have to be coded as preschool if they miss the cutoff.
All right, so, but.
We're just trying to be clearer.
Yeah, well, TK was really to. Yeah, well, TK was really to, to catch, like, three months of kids, right?
Right.
Like, the September to December birthdays or something.
Yep.
So, so we're just, so now it's just going to be basically four-year-olds, or mostly four and a little bit of five-year-olds.
Which is the program we're servicing now anyways.
Yeah, all right.
Both classrooms.
And then to go back a page, why, what's the, the interest in moving over to Mary Morrison, moving all the, the program to Mary Morrison? I know we're not talking about doing that now, next year, but the original proposal, future vision, it said, I think it was going to, like, the integrated preschool to move to Mary Morrison, early otters moved to Mary Morrison.
I think it was the Greater Early Childhood Center.
Is that always, we always have Mary Morrison for that potential, and looking at, I think I had mentioned Columbia Class Submarines being built, and 600 families potentially in the next several years coming in and continuing to come in and rotate in till 2035, 2040, I think they were saying, according to Captain Curtin. But, you know, who knows who thinks the way they are these days? But, you know, so just knowing how full our schools are, like, there's no other, no room at the end, like we've been saying, so it just alleviates some of the stressors, especially in that medium move where we would just put the transition K and have, start with that, and we could take our time and do it deliberately based on the data that we get.
Right. It is a trend that we're seeing with other school districts, too, to create an early childhood center where you can have all of your early childhood specialists, you know, in one place.
Yeah, Lerner's doing that. They're building an early childhood center.
Yeah, Norwich has, has done it.
Yeah, Norwich has done it.
I was, I was, just had another district in my head.
Denise, I don't know if you remember.
New London.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, New London has a new school that's their early childhood center, because I didn't recognize it when, it's, it's, I think it's been there a year or two. But a lot of districts are moving in that direction.
Remember when we had Paul Cadre as superintendent? You were, you were in it. He actually talked about an early childhood center. He wanted to change West Side, make West Side an early childhood school.
Oh, right.
And build a new school behind West Side.
I remember that.
Yeah, he, he talked about that to the board.
I remember that. You know, the other component is that Mary Morrison is being partially utilized by food services and ECAT, and there are...
And Treehouse.
And Treehouse. And there are quite a few classrooms that have the bathrooms in the classroom, and the building itself is in excellent shape. So it is a vision that we'd like to, you know, you know, kind of keep on the back burner for the future.
And that's why we kept this school.
We're just not quite there yet for next year.
No.
And it would free up a lot of space, because when Jen and I went to CK and Thames River, I mean, they were out of space. They're in the hallway.
Even Mystic, our transportation colleagues would be in heaven, because it would streamline the bus routes for those midday runs for our half-day programs. They, they would be thrilled.
So maybe that's something we can work on next year, to see what the funding would be.
Yeah.
To actually do that in '26, '27.
Yeah, there's a lot of benefits.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
So one of the things that Mike had asked was, currently, we have 48 students in those half-day programs, in the two programs, and we'll be able to take care of 54 in the new programs. And then there's the other additional 92 peer slots. Now, some of them are filled with 300-year-olds already, but there's a substantial number, too, of those half-day slots for students. And in addition to that, we have, we are the fiduciary of the Early Childhood Grant, like, it's in the tune of a half million dollars, and that supports our riverfront school, which is very popular, and is full-day program in before and after care. And that's got a sliding scale, and those are our Groton kids, so they're also getting educated.
Right.
And then...
An ECDC, Early Childhood Developmental Center.
So those are another 56 slots. So really, about 200 kids can get early childhood in Groton, Paymore.
And Head Start, right?
TBCCA, yeah. Yeah, and TBCCA. So we really are pretty fortunate as a community to have all these different options for families, you know, because it's, we know that early childhood makes one of the biggest differences for our students in their readiness. You know, that early language and early learning and early literacy and mathematics is huge component.
Well, and that's a great segue to the benefits of the full-day program.
Right.
So the full-day program really bridges the gap between preschool and kindergarten, and we would have 54 slots available. It does build the foundational knowledge that will help students succeed in kindergarten. The programs include specials, so the kids go to media, PE, art, music. They have lunch, so we can feed them. They get breakfast and lunch. We can take a deeper dive into the curriculum because we have them all day.
Without stressing them out?
Yeah, right. We have the mandate in Connecticut for our play-based approach, so this gives more time for play-based learning, for students to, you know, you know, really...
Engage in it.
Engage and pursue their interests. It would help us focus more on social skills and self-regulation skills. We would focus, obviously, on pre-literacy and pre-math skills. And then we align our curriculum to what's called the ELDS. It's the Early Learning Developmental Standards, and those are the beginning Connecticut Core Standards for our earliest learners. And we do assess them on the dots. That's a state assessment, too, for early childhood. So there's a lot of benefits to that full-day programming, and we didn't even put on there that it's really preferred by parents.
Yeah, it is.
Because of the, the driving and the picking up, and, and just having a place for their child to go for that other half of the day.
Yeah. So what does a day look like for the students? How much is that deep dive into curriculum, and how much is it into play and socialization?
Well, we'd have to get, we had in another slide, a typical schedule that Meg Walker, our TK teacher, created for us. So I can't answer that specifically, but I can tell you that their specials are shorter because they have shorter attention spans. So their specials are only 20 minutes, and they are learning, the teachers are learning both last year and this year. We had a grant from EastCon to help them become more comfortable with integrating play into the curriculum, because it's not as easy as it sounds. It really is student-directed, and it, it, I think it involves the teacher relinquishing a little bit of that, you know, instructional control and letting the kids go with it a little bit more. And for some of us, we feel like we're not doing our job if we're letting the kids, you know, have that creativity and that initiative to explore learning through play. So...
And there is a literacy component, and maybe even some mathematics, too, because they reflect on what they've just done and experienced, whether they're talking to one another, whether they're writing, drawing a picture or writing about it, so that there is some reflection about what they've done.
But that's where you get also a lot of the social skills, turn-taking, you know, listening to others' input. You know, a lot of the social skills and the self-regulation are, are taught and practiced and modeled during those group activities.
Is it going to be like, you know, because these kids are four, right? It's going to be more movement?
Some are five.
Some are five. Is it going to be more movement in the room where, I, I'm sort of like thinking like a Montessori room where you can go from center, or is it going to be more sitting for these kids?
Oh, no. The play-based approach has a lot of movement.
I hope so.
Even the literacy. Then they got Pete the Cat, and then they're singing and dancing, and they move even, even with some stories, you know?
All right, I hope so, because I would hate for these kids to be full-day and sitting for half the day and not really moving around and being kids.
Yeah, no, there's, there's a lot of movement. And there's, sometimes there's extra recess with snack if the weather is, is nice. So they don't just go out for recess at lunchtime, they take a short recess in the morning. So there's, especially in the fall, when you're building those routines and they're, they're kind of tired and they're still getting into the groove.
I have to bring you the five, the five teachers who are really, who built this program from ground up, from several years back. Deb West is one of the pioneers.
We, we spoke to Deb.
And, you know, they are saying that they feel it is just right for the kids at that age, that it's, it's well-balanced, and they've enjoyed teaching it, and they think it's not too, you know, it's like, not too hot, not too cold, it's just right. So if you talk to the teachers, I'd be happy to even bring them in to, if you want to learn more about what the experience has been like. So they've been very happy.
And then we wanted to just give a, an overview of our other special education programs, K to five.
Wait, one second, Denise. Adrian has a question.
Oh, just before we go on, what's the staffing of these classrooms?
They have one full-time teacher in each classroom and one full-time para educator in each classroom. And then they receive support from our related services staff. If a child has an IEP that requires speech, or OT, or PT, they would come in for that, for that purpose.
All right. So is that a special ed teacher or a regular ed teacher?
No, no.
Regular ed?
Early childhood certification.
All right.
No, these are, these are general education classes.
Or a para?
Pardon me?
It would be a full-time teacher and a, in a classroom aide or a para professional?
They're the same thing, a para educator, a full-time para.
A para?
Mm-hmm.
I thought the para was a special ed.
Denise, I think...
We have full-time paras in the TK.
Oh, you do? Okay. Thanks, Denise.
All right.
Yep. Yeah, they have a full-time para.
All right.
The only half-time paras are in the kindergarten, but...
But they're actually general ed aides. They're not considered paras. They're not in the union.
Oh, okay.
At part-time. So I'll find out if...
I have them on my roster as full-time paras.
Okay.
Well, let us know.
Yeah.
So one additional person for now.
Yeah. That's my understanding.
But sometimes, it depends, just like in our preschools, you know, where we had the one before, you know? And the board had suggested we go back to the two, which will be really helpful, but if there is a child with special needs and they need a one-to-one para, or even if they need a combined, you'll have additional people.
That would be an addition, right. So we wanted to give you just an overview of the other K to five programming for special education at the elementary level. Every elementary school has resource support to all students K to five. We also have...
Denise, is that what a resource teacher, is that what you...
That's a special ed teacher who has a resource room.
Okay.
And they either push into the gen ed classroom for part of the day, or they pull small groups out to the resource room for part of the day.
All based on their IEP.
Yes.
And what's the caseload of, of one of these resources?
It varies. It varies from anywhere from 10 to 17. We also have academy classrooms located at Thames River and Charles Barnham. Those are classrooms that have a full-time special education teacher and a full-time school social worker, so that the social worker can address the social, emotional, and behavioral needs of the child while the teacher is still teaching. And that's been a really successful model for us. We have four autism classrooms located at Mystic River Magnet School, and we have one classroom for students with multiple disabilities located at Katherine Kolnasky Magnet School. And these are all for students in grades K to five. So we have the FTE breakdown for you here. CB has five FTEs. Again, these are three resource teachers and two academy teachers. We also have ECAT here. Actually, three resource, one academy, and ECAT.
Oh, yeah.
Katherine Kolnasky has four FTEs. They have three resource teachers and one teacher in a multiple disabilities classroom. Mystic River Magnet School has 4.5 resource teachers, and they have four teachers that teach in our self-contained autism classrooms. Northeast Academy has three resource teachers. Thames River has 4.5 resource teachers and two academy teachers. And then district-wide, we have 1.0 FTE teacher of the deaf.
And that's K through 12.
That's K through 12.
Or even pre-K if it's needed.
Yeah, yeah. We didn't want to leave her out.
How many deaf students do you have in the district?
I think her caseload is about 10.
10.
With, you know, varying levels of hearing impairment. We have no Braille students. For related services staff, this is, again, K to five, actually, pre-K to five, because these folks work in the preschool classrooms. We have 11 speech and language pathologists. A lot of our youngest learners are still learning, you know, oral language, expressive language, and pragmatic language. So we have a lot of speech paths at the, at the preschool level, the K level, grade one, grade two. And all of our autis, our students in our autism program receive speech, because that is really a hallmark of their disability. So we have a lot of speech pathologists, and they are busy, even though we have a lot. We have six school psychologists. We have seven social workers. Three of them are in the academy. And then we have 1.5 board-certified behavior analysts. This is a position that's really essential to our autism program. It's also essential for stu, for students to be in what we call the least restrictive environment. So for students who are struggling with self-regulation, behavior regulation, our BCBAs provide consultation services to students in the resource model, so that they can hopefully stay in that least restrictive environment with a behavior intervention plan and some strategies that work for them across all settings throughout the day.
And we're thrilled that we have the RBTs now, which are the para educators that have had this highly qualified training, and they report to the BCBAs, because that's given us even more support in these specialized programs.
Yes.
And they're not, they're not in that count?
They're not, no, we didn't list them, but that's why I was thinking about it.
We were just capturing certified in that count. They're non-certified. But a lot, some of them are, are in programs to be BCBAs.
Yeah.
Which is exciting.
Yeah.
Ian?
Thank you. I just joined the meeting. I'm sorry, I was a little delayed, unforeseen circumstances, but I came in about 7:27, if I may say. And I was just curious, you know, I might have missed it, but did we go over the current specific caseloads of the special ed staff? The current numbers?
Yeah, Beverly asked about the caseload. The caseloads vary from about 10 to 17, 18. Some of our teachers have 20 students, which is why we're asking for an additional special ed teacher at Mystic and Thames. You can see we have a .5 right now at Mystic and Thames. That's the same teacher. So she does two and a half days at Mystic and two and a half days at Thames. Our hope is, if we can get an additional FTE through the budget for special education, we'd like to have, you know, five resource teachers at Mystic and five resource teachers at Thames, so that that split position is, is no longer. And the caseloads definitely support it.
Yeah.
I guess I was hoping to capture like an actual snapshot of the current, like, real statistic. I know we had Adrian and I had asked about that before, like, knowing that, you know, there's an approximate range and a fluctuation, but like, I, I think it would be beneficial just like, anytime we have a conversation like this, just to have the actual current snapshot of what is right now.
So I think I told you...
Along with those ranges.
I'm sorry. I think we, I had mentioned that we meet about three times a year to review caseloads and to see what's going to be needed for next year, so we're about to have one of those meetings. So as soon as we see the most updated version, which should happen in the next few weeks, I'll make sure that you get that data.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
I think what you're saying, Denise, is actually, from what Jen and I can hear, that's, that's what the caseloads are at the schools that, you know, that we've been hearing.
Yeah, I mean, ideally, what we like to have is, we like to have a resource teacher supporting two grade levels. So K1, one teacher, 2, 3, one teacher, and 4, 5, one teacher. So they can really take a deep dive into that curriculum and modify it and differentiate it. But sometimes, when they have smaller caseloads, they'll work in three grade levels. It really varies throughout the district because the teachers work together to support each other. So sometimes, if one's teacher has a larger caseload than another, there might be a teacher that will take, even though they're working with students in grades K and 1, they might work with two third graders to help out their colleague. So the caseloads do flex and they do adjust, because we do have in some of our schools a lot of movement. We also have new students coming in, and it seems to me, you know, although I know registration comes to me only when the students have IEPs, but it does seem as if we get... but it does seem as if we get a lot of students with IEPs. And we also have our students who are being referred.
Right, yeah, that's what the teachers were talking about, wasn't it Jen?
And that, that stresses them out, because in addition to, you know, servicing their caseload, they're evaluating students who are not making progress, are not responding to the instruction, and to the intervention. And then those students get added to their caseloads. And this is a time of year, we're coming up on parent-teacher conferences next week. So this is a time of the year where if students aren't making progress, and they've been in intervention since October, November, they're going to be referred to special education. Right? Because if they're not making progress, we can reasonably assume it could be because they have a disability. So this, this is a very stressful time in our world, because we're also planning for next year. And we're transitioning our preschoolers to K, and our fifth graders to middle school, and our middle schoolers to the high school. So it's a very busy time of year.
That's exactly what some of the teachers told us.
Yeah, yeah.
Jen?
Do you know how like the career, oh, you know how like the career counselor stays with the kids? Let's say in middle school from sixth grade to eighth grade? They don't follow that same model, because don't you think that would create like stability? So like if somebody starts with them at kindergarten, they just follow them up to fifth grade and then cycle back down?
So with the model that we have, the teacher stays with the student two, sometimes three years.
Okay.
But what we find is, when you're a special education teacher and you're going in to do a little bit of co-teaching in someone else's classroom, it's like a marriage. So when you have a team of teachers that you work really well with, and you've kind of worked out that dance, in terms of who's going to deliver the, the instruction, and then who's going to break up into small groups, they tend to want to stay with their teams, because they've developed really close relationships and trusting relationships. And they work well together, and they also know the curriculum.
They get a lot of professional development too, especially lately as we've made some shifts and moves. So they've gotten some deep dives in the curriculum that they need, especially for special education.
And they've developed these relationships that they, they just don't want to lose. Like, you know, they, they, they kind of have their, their partners in gen ed that they have been working with, and they know each other, they know the curriculum. And they just feel really comfortable with each other. And, you know, not all teachers are comfortable having another teacher in their room. So when you find teachers that really work well with that model, you tend to want to keep working with them, because it benefits everybody.
Thank you.
Yep.
Actually, that's something we're going to have to work on, that some of the paras don't feel connected to the teacher that they're working with. And that could be like a handicap.
Well, and I think it's because they don't necessarily do the planning with the teacher, because that's not their role. Or maybe they don't do the instruction, because they provide more extra practice. So I think sometimes they feel disconnected, right? Because they don't go to the faculty meetings. You know, they're really working with the kids when we're in meetings, like grade level planning meetings. So there is a big disconnect. But the role of the special ed teacher is to bridge that gap, you know, and to, because those para professionals are assigned to the teachers, some of them, you know, when they do pull out, they work in the resource room. So that's really the role, one of the roles of the special ed teacher, is to work closely with the para. And sometimes people are just running, and they're busy, and they're in PPTs, and they don't get a chance to have those conversations until we have a TLI day. So that's something we're always balancing. But I understand where they're coming from.
I think some of the paras that have been in those specialized programs for a long period of time are very connected. I mean, they really are, they're on the ground making it work, right?
The preschool paras stay, they-
I'm more concerned about the paras that aren't.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Ones that are, they're all set. And we got to think about the ones that aren't. Mike?
Yeah, thank you, thank you for your presentation. I just have two questions. For the, the certified staff that you've enumerated, are there any open positions right now, or are they all filled?
We have, oh no, they're all filled. We do have some anticipated vacancies for next year.
Okay, so-
They're all filled.
So this, during the school year, certified staff is, is teaching where they, they should be. And then my other question was, a few slides ago, you mentioned the autism classrooms, and then like the multiple disability classroom. What are, can you give me a sense of the class sizes in those? I imagine they'd be quite small by necessity.
They're 10, they're about, they range from eight to 10.
And is that like, is that our target, is that state-managed, it seems like it must be-
I think our target is 12 for our class parameters. We try to stay between 6 and 8. This time of the year, we're pushing 9 and 10 in some of our classrooms.
Got it. And that's the same for the autism as the, is it called the multiple disability?
And it's a very similar type of classroom. And I just would like to share with the board that, you know, there is a program in the military called the Exceptional Family Member Program. And it's such a compliment to us. Many, many, many of our children in our autism program, their parents apply to the Exceptional Family Member Program, so that they can stay. So we don't have as much turnover in those programs as we used to have.
So you're saying the, the military can, can stay on location, same location? Yeah, okay.
And Grotton's very popular for his day.
That's part of the reason why they're up to 10 on some, on some, you know, this time of the year.
Oh, just a couple of questions. The paras, now they're allowed to attend PPTs now, correct, by law?
Only if the parent requests.
Alright, so the parent would request, and then does that happen very often?
No.
Are parents told they can request that ahead of time? Alright, alright.
It's on the, it's on the notice.
Alright, that they can request to have a para there, alright. And then the, the special ed teaching staff, is that inclusive of also the, the teachers that provide like math support and reading support?
No, those are interventionists.
Alright, that's separate intervention, alright.
That's a separate bucket.
Alright, thank you.
Anything else for Denise? Denise? Those classes must get pretty busy with nine students, and each student has an aide, as a para?
Well, some are enhanced. We do have, they have, they share a para, because we have some students who've really made tremendous gains. And we're very proud of the gains they've made. And we try to develop their independence as soon as we can. Because some of the, our children get very dependent on prompts and on adults. And we try to discourage that, you know, so that they're actively learning and, you know, seeking information and becoming independent.
Jen?
It just came up. So do we see, as they graduate from elementary to middle to high school, less and less support, because the kids are getting more confident and-
That's our goal, yes, absolutely. Certainly in sixth grade, we provide a high level of support, because it's their first year at the middle school. But they're also in a real developmental period at that point, where they're really, you know, growing and maturing. And by eighth grade, they're ready for high school. Ninth grade, again, is a year where we provide a lot of support. We have two classrooms at the middle school and two classrooms at the high school. But by 10th, 11th grade, you start to see them really start to soar. Yeah, okay.
And is that their choice? Oh, sorry, is that their choice to say like, I no longer want to have a development plan? Or is that at that point-
The student's choice?
Yeah, or, or do you guys evaluate them? Because how about if a student says like, oh, I, I think I'm better, I, like, do you need to evaluate them and say, oh, we concur?
We, we generally have the conversations with the parent.
Okay.
And sometimes what we'll do is, we'll say, this is the time of the day where we're going to provide more support. Generally, it's during instruction, ELA in math. Whereas this is the time of the day where we're going to provide less support, like unified PE, or unified foods, or unified art. You know, so we kind of, we meet the student where they are, while trying to, you know, kind of-
Get them ready.
Right, right.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mike.
Oh, just a quick one. You mentioned the, your meeting to discuss caseloads again. I just wondered what the timeline is, because it occurred to me that, that's very valuable information for the board to have at any time, but it might be helpful as the budget process continues to have a real solid understanding.
Same thing in mind, so it has to happen sooner than later, because we're thinking the same thing.
My sense is they're not like caseloads, so.
And they change a lot. They change a lot from one year to the next. When students maybe go to a magnet school, although we hate to lose them, but we do have students that leave and go to a magnet school. We have students that leave to go to Grasso, marine science, obviously. We have students that go to Isaac. So there is a lot of movement over the summer. And we tend to start the year with smaller caseloads, and then they build over the year as referrals are made and students move in. And then we kind of get to our bursting point, you know, by May. But by May, we know that, you know, the year's coming to a close, and, you know, we, you know, we will get there. But it, and that's a cycle that every school district, I think, follows.
And so for timeline, are we like expecting kind of mid-April, by mid-April, something like that? Yeah, that'd be very helpful.
Well, conferences are coming up, so this is a good time.
Yes, we, we will get referrals after next week.
Got it.
Yeah, guaranteed.
Does the high school have conferences?
Yes, it is. It's on the agenda.
It's going to do them in the fall, in the spring, just like everybody else. Thank you. Yeah.
And Susan and I have talked about, because teachers have asked about a special ed committee. Not a board committee, but with teachers, because they want to really dive deep into special ed. So Susan and I have talked about it, and I-
And I think we've got a plan. Take one of the committees, the existing committees, and have it, you know, have a specialized special ed component, like four times a year, to focus on that.
Yeah, we welcome the input, for sure.
Yeah.
And one of the teachers, I figured out what school it was. Mystic River, she said she would be willing to be on that committee.
Okay.
Miss Hill, Hill? I figured out the name. I figured out the name.
We usually ask for volunteers.
And can we have a board member on that committee?
Sure, we'll let you know when the, yeah, when we have it.
Yeah, we're happy to.
Well, maybe Mike wants to be on that committee. Alright, thank you Denise.
Thank you.
Thank you everyone.
Thank you Denise.
Do you come back and talk about middle school, special ed, and middle school and high school? Okay. Alright, next is the view of the referral sheet. And we're just going to look at-
You get on the road. You and Denise have, waiting to go around the corner.
Thank you Denise.
Thank you.
So we're just looking at committee of the whole referral. There's a lot of stuff on here. The first one is discussion for ICAG, all historical board meetings back to 2016, 2017, school year to go on our YouTube channel. I don't know if that's doable.
I talked to Clint, and he says that would be enormous time for just selected few. And we're really watching our overtime, so that's nothing we can start at this point. Maybe in the summer, he can start looking back.
We'll have AI do it.
Huh?
AI do it.
I'll ask him to try it out. But I think that that's something that we can do anytime soon, right now.
So the second one is the development of board goals. We have board goals currently, we're working, did you anything?
We, we've got a, I'm just looking right now. It looks like we've put in the paperwork to the Nautilus, we've checked with Nick. And the, April 24th is the date that Nick can come back, and that the Nautilus is available.
Is that a Thursday?
That's a Thursday.
Okay.
So if that works for people, we can-
Mark your calendar, April 24th, there's going to be a board retreat at the Nautilus Museum, starting at 5:00. And Nick Caruso will go over board roles and responsibilities, and, and I hope everyone comes, because if everyone doesn't come, then we're going to be in the same boat. That some people hear what he says, and some people don't hear what he says. I need for everybody to be there, so we're all on the same page.
On the same sub? Was that the Nautilus, on the same sub?
One ship, one for one.
So that's April 24th?
Yep.
24th?
Oh, I may not be here.
Oh.
I'm going to be Friday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday that week.
Yeah, it's a Thursday.
Yeah, I don't come back until Friday. And I'm going away one other time in this month. Yep, I'm not going to be here.
So should I remove that?
Yeah, should we change it?
Yeah, I'm not going to be here.
Okay, yeah. We, we had looked at that Wednesday, too.
Yeah, the 23rd.
And I, for some reason, I think he was available, but the Nautilus wasn't. So, I don't know. So now we're looking at the 24th, but I can, so when will you be back?
I won't be back until the 25th.
I'm not going to see without the captain, so. We'll wait.
Yeah.
So, well, the next, we were saying Wednesday, because Wednesday seems to be a good time for-
For Jay.
Jay.
Because we want everybody to be here, so Jay, I don't know.
So how about if I ask about the-
He tends to be off on Wednesday and Thursday, so I'm hoping that if we make it a Wednesday, because I want everybody, all the board members, to be at the retreat. So I'm trying to make it at a day when he's off also.
The 30th, maybe?
Yeah.
If I, I'll check with Nick.
Yeah, the 30th, I'm here. Okay. Wow.
Wow.
Because first we said April 2nd, then April 9th.
They're closed, the Nautilus, it's shut down for their reconfiguration or whatever, their spring cleaning.
Not unless somebody can think of a different location, but we thought the Nautilus would be nice.
That'd be nice.
Yeah. And Jen wants it away somewhere.
I do.
Yeah.
Okay, I do.
Okay.
Yes.
So we'll see about the following one.
Does Jane know anyone from the hotels?
She's responding to me right now, so.
Does Jane know anyone from the hotels?
Which is-
Does Jay know anyone? Jay?
From where?
Hotels.
Like what?
Meeting spaces.
Marriott?
They usually, I did that one time, Jen, and it did cost us a night.
Oh, it did cost us, oh. Can, how about the Y, maybe? Maybe they'll, since they're like a nonprofit and we're like, you know.
Oh, the Y in Mystic?
The Y in Mystic.
Let's see what happens with the Nautilus.
The Nautilus is nice, yeah.
We don't want to push it back too far, so. I wanted it to be sooner than later.
Me too. Okay.
Now it seems like it's later.
She's writing back, so.
Anyway, so we're working on that. Discussion of the school calendar, that was Jay's, I don't know what that was about. Does anybody remember?
I think that was the, like, the extra, did we, the time, the two-week, was that the two-week Christmas vacation extra week? Or you, like, the Christmas vacation?
We voted on that one.
Oh, came up new again? Yeah, but that was a year ago.
That was a year, though.
So was it maybe that?
I don't know.
I don't know.
Yeah.
We do have to vote on our graduation date, and we're thinking Thursday, the 12th, with a rain date, Friday, because we want it on the field, no matter what. So Friday, the 13th.
Oh.
So, but Thursday, the 12th, that's a little less spooky than Friday, the 13th. But at least we can be on the field, hopefully.
We got to check with Grasso, just to make sure.
Alright, so I don't know what the calendar is about, I'll ask Jay, and then we can find out what his thoughts are. The next one is discussion, the board's interest in drafting a policy regarding family and board ad notification or testing data. And that's Adrian's. I mean, do you all want to go ahead with that? Or you want to speak on that, Adrian, and we can see if the board wants to go ahead with that?
Well, I didn't, I've got a few things on here, I didn't really come prepared to talk about them all. So I didn't think that that's what we were doing tonight. But this was based off of, off of testing being done in the schools, and parents sometimes being given the test results and sometimes not. So that was the big thing. And the board having test results, as far as when, I mean, I don't even know all the tests that are done right now. But it was really a, for, it was, it was requesting discussion of that.
It's standardized testing, you mean, right? Or are you talking?
Yeah.
Something other?
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be standardized testing data.
Alright. So is the board interested in drafting a policy regarding family and board- So is the board interested in drafting a policy regarding family and border ad notification of testing data? So you want us to develop a policy? Is that it?
I wanted to have discussion about that.
About developing a policy, okay.
Yeah.
Would it fold in with the next line?
For review of state, actually, it's to Adrian.
What's that?
We've got a couple of these, so why don't we just roll yours?
Like, one meeting with both of those?
Yeah, I've got four of them. Well, yeah, the, um, state testing data. No, that's just, that's just EdSite. That was really to go over EdSite, because the numbers in EdSite sometimes seem to align with ours and sometimes don't. There's a lot of data in EdSite.
Yeah.
And, um, and that's what the community has available to them, which is slightly different than the data that we have. So just going through EdSite to explain to the board what's there and to the community what's there, because it's a lot of very powerful information.
Yeah, we did that at one point, but I think it'd be good to go back to it, to make sure people-
So, so one's a student and family level perspective, look at things. And then the second one is a, like, a district level, look at testing.
Yeah, well, that's, the EdSite is really just on the state standardized testing.
But, but your other one was like a student family, so they are-
Correct, yeah, it was like, uh, in the school system, if we give a child testing, are we gonna tell the parents that we did the testing and the results of the testing?
So there is communication plan around that. And I think Anne Marie did do a board note just recently on all that goes into that and explaining those assessments. But we do have additional, besides the state, we do have now the DIBELS assessment with Amplify.
Yeah, and I think there's other assessments as well, right?
Oh, you're just talking about special ed-related testing?
No, I mean, like, the DIBELS isn't special ed-related?
But, but other testing, like, if they were, you know, trying to evaluate a student for services?
Yeah, just so that parents are told.
That all has to be agreed on.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, there's a PPT before special ed testing happens.
So is this our 2024 DSH11, is this something we already do? This review of state and-
Yeah, we do it all through the year. It's actually on that other sheet that goes month to month. Like, the report card's something that we typically do about now, March, April. So that, it takes a full year to do the whole accountability index for all the data to come through from last year.
But we had that K person in that spoke quite well about, like, developing your own dashboard. Yeah.
Yeah, that's me. I guess, I wasn't at that meeting, but I guess you never did that there. I don't know what he was talking about, because I wasn't there.
Yeah, I don't think we did anything that'd be useful.
The dashboard that's already there is the dashboard that we use all the time. That has most of the data that we're looking at, the state used data. So that would be good to showcase again to the board.
Yeah, I mean, we've hit parts of that, we haven't even hit all of what's on that report card.
I know, there's a lot.
But that's, I just thought it would be informative to hit all of that, to just go through that report card.
So that's exactly, this is the time that we do that. So we were just talking about this, so I think we should put it on one of our COWs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So do we need to keep this on, or can we take it off and just have Susan, remind Susan, or?
Well, why don't we take it off when we really go over it?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's actually on that other sheet, it's the month-to-month tracker of all the meetings that we do, so, um, we'll just, I think it's-
So we'll do this in April or May?
April's probably better, because, um, May is going to be some celebrations and stuff like that.
Oh, yeah, I think, yeah, we'll discuss that night, okay. The next one's yours, too, Adrian.
Yeah, that was to, um, to review, um, how many kids and what the interventions are for ELA and reading, K to five.
Which one were we looking at, I'm off of?
Are you on the foreign language one?
Yeah.
2024-13?
Oh, what about 12?
12, that's what we're on, 12.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Foreign language survey from two years ago.
Yeah, it was really to discuss, to see if what our foreign language offerings are in alignment with, in alignment with what the students and parents are requesting.
I almost feel like we need a new survey to find out what they're thinking now.
Actually, it wasn't on the board then, if you could just send the old one, results, to us, that'd be great, too. Just, just as a side.
Yeah, I mean, it's only, it's, yeah, I guess it was three years old now, but, um, but it, you know, yeah, I mean-
You have this, you have the results?
Somewhere, someone has it, probably Lauren can look through.
Sign, sign language, non-European languages.
Yeah, well, there was interesting, in a lot of different languages.
I think it started because Latin.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, because Latin.
Eastern languages, too.
What's that? Yeah.
Like Mandarin or something.
When I was going through, um, you know, what, what UConn accepts for IB and stuff like that, they accept a lot of foreign language credits in AP credits in different languages that we don't offer. So it'd just be nice to have a review of our foreign language offerings and the alignment of what our district desires.
Also, get that to Susan, then you think, you can have that first.
Um, well, I'll talk to Lauren about it tomorrow, let's see.
All right, you're the next one, too, Adrian.
Yeah, so this is, this was to discuss the interventions for ELA and K to five. So are we identifying enough kids, you know, how many kids are in, in this, that type of thing?
I have the elementary principals tomorrow, so I'll talk to them about it.
We could just ask Denise.
Well, she, she does, you know, hers is more like tier four. So hers is beyond the intervention, tier one, two, and three.
Well, tier three would be, you're in special ed, right, for tier three?
Not necessarily, they always think that's the next, beyond, tier three. Tier three is needing maybe a Wilson program. I mean, that could be special ed or not special ed, depending.
So you'll ask the principals about that. Okay, the next one is Matt, implementation of the district's DEI plan. Matt's not there, so I'll talk to him about it. Okay. Create a monetary threshold for moving money within the budget. I think, are you doing that for enterprise funds? I know we're doing, we have a policy about transferring money.
We do.
But this enterprise fund, is that something different?
You know, we haven't really talked about that. I think, is Ian there? I think he's talking about food services and treehouse.
Oh, okay.
So I'll have to ask Ray that question.
Okay. And the dashboard proposal. Now, I wasn't here for that meeting, so, um-
Maybe we'll get that with Nick.
We can ask Nick. I think when you see the EdSite, you'll see that that has some comprehensive data to look at, too.
Climate survey?
Yeah, we're getting ready to send those out.
Okay.
And we've tried to get them over conferences, so parents will actually fill them out. We get more buy-in when we have the computers set up and they're able to do them.
Um, survey questions. Is that something we're gonna do, review the survey questions prior to the survey going out?
I know, we have a, we have a committee that does that, and we're trying to keep them very standard, similar, so that we can compare them from one year to the next. That was a request that the board had made, so we don't, I don't think we made any major changes.
Can, can you send out that survey just to us, one at a time?
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, you could take yours early.
Oh, that's true. No, that might be considered cheating.
All right, so we don't need that, you're already doing that, but Matt, you have a committee that's doing that.
Yeah.
Okay. What about this?
It's called the Culture and Climate.
Um, what about this transplant map?
That was something that we looked into last year, and it was a really good idea, but it is something that they would develop for us, but it would be stagnant. I always thought that it would change based on kids moving in and out. So for $6,000, have a stagnant map, didn't seem to make sense, but, and I didn't have the funds last year.
We don't have the funds this year.
We don't have the funds. But we are, I know Lauren was looking into seeing if there's a way with Clint that we could create something, our own programming, that would show us the ins and outs. So it would show you with dots, who are the kids going to which schools?
Yeah, we don't need to pay anyone $6,000 for that, because like, if we know where their home street address is, we would normally know what their homeschool would be. And then we know what their school, they're attending. And so, we don't need to pay. Exactly, we don't need $6,000, that should be like easy.
And we do this ourselves.
Isn't it just gonna be the kids, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have started, but isn't it just gonna be the kids that aren't there, going out of their home district? So they had to actually sign up for that in the first place? So it would just be tracking those kids, right?
Yeah, that's why I was saying, we don't need $6,000.
Lottery every year with a certain number, yeah, but there's a certain number, I mean, we know who all those kids are.
Have so many slots, depending on the level, right?
So literally, more, almost a pie chart, like, for instance, NEAs got so many out of, out of their sending school realm. They have a pie chart.
Especially when I heard that it's not dynamic and it's just a snapshot in time, and I figured we could do that.
But pie charts would be nice, like, you say, okay, this many people come from the CK realm, this many people come from, et cetera, et cetera. Ian wanted to say that he left the meeting at 7:53.
Yeah, just got there.
Yeah.
Just lighting it down.
I think we should still leave it, because we could, if she gives us the data of, I mean, like, any, Ian's not even here either.
It just takes somebody to actually go through and-
Yeah, that was like an Ian request, right? I think, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
But he left. But it was a good broader discussion, right, to discuss where, how, how the magnet school works, you know?
And then what do we do when we find out how it works? I mean, I always like to know, we're, we're doing all this for knowing how it works to-
So what now, what?
So what now?
I think it was related to the bus.
Doing work, so we can look at it and see, is there end to, end game to this?
Time on bus, bus routes, do we need to add?
Yeah, I think it was related to the buses when he requested it. Like, how long was a kid staying on the bus?
And there are similar questions for the summer school.
Yeah.
Right?
What, which number were you on, so I can make a note there?
Uh, 27.
27.
Oh, it's still on the transplant.
Yeah, it's still on the transplant.
So bus routes include summer?
We should just ask Ian on that, though.
No, no, we can, he, the transplant, he's been talking about that.
Yeah, he has been talking about that.
Yeah, yeah, so we just need to confirm what his, what his thoughts are, exactly what he was looking for in that.
Okay, next, the board retreat. Okay, we gotta looking at that. Software survey, I don't know what that's about.
Well, we usually do a usage and a survey about the same time to look at our software when we're preparing the budget. And we definitely, when we've not seen the usage up, then we start investigating. Like, DreamBox usage in middle school is not great, so we're already rethinking that. So there's a couple of things that, because of that data that we've collected, we might make adjustments, but we'll come through curriculum first before we do anything.
Yeah, I mean, that, that would be fine if it's too much to get, I mean, there is, there is a couple of things. I mean, I, like, a year ago, I think I summarized a lot of the comments and tried to categorize them by each piece of software, but, but like another one, like, you know, DreamBox was not one of the popular ones. There's a couple that weren't popular, and a big one for the elementary was Lexia, that it seemed like a lot of teachers were not happy that Lexia was being limited, I guess, out of, they, they were used to using it and they weren't. And, and I didn't really think about it until I told my wife, and then, and then she said, what are they gonna use if they're not using Lexia, we need Lexia. You know, she's in a different district, so we have different resources here, but-
And they're working quite well, and now with the wit and wisdom, it's taking, I mean, it's tremendous time, and I don't think they could even squeeze in Lexia. I think Lexia is used, though, in certain components for special education, so we do have seats in Lexia, but only through intervention and special ed.
Well, yeah, I'm just saying that it seemed from that survey, a lot of teachers wanted Lexia, so that was a year ago. We had different programs, but that's why I wanted the discussion on the survey, you know, because of just how that-
I'm switching that over to curriculum.
Yeah, that's fine.
It's a curriculum thing, okay. Discussing, discussion regarding open communication, we already did that with the state, right? The state delegation, allow for interpreter, oh, this is something different, technology, okay. Well, we didn't ask them when they came, so I don't know who wants to take that one on.
That's, you know, that's an agit question. I mean, I don't, the state doesn't allow interpreters right now. So I guess he wanted to talk to the representatives at the state level. I mean, they're passing bills right now, so.
It's too late for a new bill.
Yeah.
Remember Christine told us.
And it's probably got a price tag, just saying, to get interpreters in the schools.
Well, we'll leave that to Ian, and he can talk to Andre.
Yeah, yeah.
In all seriousness, this is where AI actually could help in the coming years, in a big way.
Yeah, you're right.
What board would like to, okay, we already did that with the state legislators, so we could take that off. That, that's just gonna be an automatic yearly thing that we do. We don't need to keep it on a referral sheet.
I know, especially if we get, like, the testing data on that other sheet, so we know regularly when things are coming up. I'd rather have it that way, because that's a good reminder for us.
Um, lack there of space in schools?
I don't know what we could do about that.
We're only getting the bleachers and the field, they, what did they vote for, 13,000?
13 million.
13 million, out of the 37 million, so I think that's further targeting to start the project.
The bleachers and the fields? Oh, the second field?
No, just the one.
What about the field house?
Oh, just the main field.
No, no, no field house, no.
And it's ADA, in compliance, so.
Yeah, because I think, yeah, it was like 30, 30 million altogether?
37 million.
37 million.
Just for Fitch, the whole project was like 57 million.
Yeah.
Yeah. So they're cutting it down. Anyway, so I don't know what we could do with lack of-
Well, is it, is that talking about classroom sizing and stuff? Class sizing? It might be nice just to review, I mean, we reviewed it in the budget, but it seems like all the schools are packed. Maybe it would be an idea to kind of just specifically talk about how tight some of the schools are and then what our plans are if, um, if we do get an influx of students. You know, we're building more, you know, housing and the community's growing.
Well, that's why Susan's talking about moving there, pre-K and K into Mary Morris, so you need to free up some space in some of these elementary schools.
Yeah, no, I think that's a great idea, but, like, I didn't know about that, so that's why I had my question. But maybe it's a good idea to just talk about space in general.
Well, I talked about vintage weight, a fit, getting the robotics into the manufacturing shop, you know, redoing that. And then there's the middle school, but they, they've just gone through this power school training, and they've got a better handle of class size for next year, and they're filling them up again, better than we've ever done. So I just talked to Matt about that, but that might be a good time to have them come in and talk to you about, is space, have they, with that, you know, scheduling, are they finding space is still a struggle? Are there areas that they're needing or feeling tight in space, so?
Well, when we were at Catherine Kanaski, they had a big music room, and she had asked for three years in a row that they could put a wall up, too, so the teacher can have their own space and a space for the class. I don't know what the problem is, but three years is a long time when you're talking about space. And other issues that come up with space, that nothing's getting done, so I don't know.
Well, I think they're projects, I think they cost money and they cost time, and so, but it's on, on the list.
Well, there you go, Adrian. Space is never gonna be solved, because it's gonna cost money and time.
No, it does, they do get solved, but it does take, I'm just saying, some time.
Well, this is Matthews, this is Matthews, this is Matthews' referral, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna take over on what I, what I, when it does seem, it does seem like we're, it seems like we're at capacity to, in a lot of areas. It might be nice just to have a-
You go to the school, they're out in the hallway.
An encompassing understanding, a global understanding of where we are.
They took it with another closet. They took it with another closet.
They want to make a wall so the staff can have room and wait and wait and wait and wait.
Yes, so like there's, I guess, two or three administrators who don't have offices, and then there's this.
Elementary.
Elementary. So there's this one space where if they build a wall up and put a door, then that's at least an office space for, was it the military person, I believe?
Yeah, the military person, military.
So that was one space, the other one Beverly already mentioned.
So this is what I'm going to say, I think the principals have ideas on how they can get more space, but is that happening? And that's how it's going to be, is that happening?
Sounds like a good meeting, then. Right? We should definitely have that meeting.
Well, I think it's important for the community to know that we have space issues.
Right. I've been saying it quite a bit.
We have space issues, community.
Yeah.
Do you hear?
We might have further issues if those quality class subs continue to be built, so.
Anyway, there's nothing we can do about lest we expand the middle school. I mean, they built the middle school so you can add on to it. I don't see that happening anytime soon. Portable classrooms, I don't know. Anyway, and this is the last one is robotics.
Yeah, I think that, so Ian put that up, I think that's where where is robotics going to be because currently it's not in a school building, and it's not well climate controlled for sure. And it does have a big footprint, too.
Some of this also goes through CIPs to get the funding for the, like, we've had culinary on the list for five, six years. We've developed a plan, we know what we need, but we haven't gotten that. And same thing with the manufacturing center, which EB is going to help us with, which was the old auto shop, and that's where we want to bring back our robotics team.
But we don't have anything on CIP for that.
We do. I think we do have a planning, a plan for that, $100,000 CIP.
For a plan.
For the manufacturing center.
For the manufacturing center.
Yeah.
But you're saying if we get that, that's where the robotics team will be housed and that manufacturing center?
Yeah.
So so I'd like to add one, and we kind of talked about it, the, I think it's the early childhood center. That's a good talk topic to talk about. It's going to happen before, you know, we get into the budget session process next year.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah, we have to see how much money it's going to cost.
Yeah.
If anything.
I just have a question about the referral tracking sheet. So at at the end of our curriculum meeting, we went through a few and changed some, so we got rid of this one that's been on since 2018, reviewing the English language arts. But then I was told by Erica that we can't add or delete them in the committee meetings. Is that is that true?
I don't know. What curriculum?
So I guess.
Yeah, I don't see why you can't.
Yeah, that's kind of what I thought, like if we wanted.
Yes, if we do it in committee.
Yeah, you do it in committee.
All right, so so we can.
Just just let Susan know that you subtracted some or whoever.
Oh, yeah, no, we went through, I think, what was it? Erica was rewatching, and she said, no, you have to do that in a COW or something, but then I asked, but as long as everybody's.
Wasn't it our 9,000, Dean? Do you remember? Did they change that in the 9,000?
Off the top of my head, I don't know, but this is a common, common issue, which is technically, these are matters that are referred to committees, whether it's COW or the smaller committees. The referral would be made by the board itself. That is the body that we're members of. This is just a committee of the board, happens to be all nine of us. So technically, unless the 9,000 say something else, the procedure would be to add things to the list, frankly, to take things off the list, would be up to the board, not the COW.
And I remember also hearing that any board member can add to the list, but it has to go through the chair.
There there should be a mechanism, and again, I'm without looking at the 9,000, there should be a mechanism, the same way that you would handle a motion. A motion's got to be seconded, why? To demonstrate some minimal level of interest in the matter to be discussed. Same thing for a referral. Otherwise, it's a total wild west. Whatever I want, I can populate a list of with 100 referrals. There should be some demonstration of interest with among, you know, among others, other members of the board.
So in the curriculum committee's case, maybe the, just to make it clear, the next time we have a regular meeting and a curriculum committee report, you can report out on what we got out of referrals and what we want added, and then they can just say.
And then we would agree that to take it off or?
I guess that.
How about just put a line through it in the thing and with a date? I thought that's what we were going to do.
I thought that's what we agreed upon, too.
Line through it with a date, and then if anybody wants to talk about it, they can talk about it.
But at least you could report out on it, right? And then we're.
Yeah, I guess in a report, you could go.
Because by that logic, we can't even add or subtract things here.
Right, so you refer something, you.
Yeah, we have to do it at the board meeting.
Yeah, curriculum addresses it, reports back to the board, and then if the board's satisfied, that should comes off off the referral list.
So when we give our committee reports, that would be the time when you put the line through it and the date.
I mean, that's usually how that would be done. I don't think we've ever done it that way, though, exactly.
At a regular meeting.
Yeah, but we give a very bare bones report about, you know, we met and we talked about stuff, and that's it. But what you should expect, I think, but we've never done this, is the board will say, hmm, that's an interesting topic, we would like the policy committee or curriculum or finance to go deeper into that one. You guys meet and take one meeting, two meeting, all year, whatever time you need, come, get back to us with the answer regarding, you know, EVs or whatever it is.
Anything about that.
And then come back, and that way the task is done. It's been referred to the committee, which is why they are committees, because the board is the committor.